Amen. Vážený Svatý, plněte srdce svého svatého milovaného, a vytvořte v nich lásku svého milovaného ducha. Následujte svého ducha, a oni se stane vytvářením, a teď se vzdřeje zemí. Přečkáme. O Bohu, kdo vytvořil srdce svého milovaného ducha během svého svatého ducha, do tohoto stejného ducha nám umožňují opravdu dobře a vždycky se v něm rozsvítit skrze Krista našeho Boha. Amen. Ve jménu Boha, syna a svatého ducha. Amen.
Dobře, část 5 a 6. Část 5 se nazývá "Le jen gladiče Boží", což znamená, jak to říká, v průběhu části, něco jako Boží šál. Alespoň opravdu je to Boží šál, šál pro Boha, ano? Možná jsem vysvětlil v předchozí sesi, že titul "Šál pro Boha" byl známý mezi chrátky. Byl to více obvyklým mezi zahraniční chrátky. Měli celý množství saintů, nazývá se "Šál pro Boha", a byli to lidé, kteří žili veřejně život, který byl tak neuvěřitelný a tak proti to, co vypadá, že je to praktické společenské poznání a prostě obvyklé cesty společnosti. A většinou oni jsou v sobě živí, pokračují. A tohle je pocit, že tohle je muž, kdo si vytlačil na Boží provinu a je velmi jasné, že je zastavěný. Všichni jsme zastaveni zasvěcením. Kontinuující existenci vytváření je milovaní, kontinuální milovaní Boží intenzity, Boží moc a jeho radost. Ale on nám dá takovým obvyklým existence, že nám umožňuje pokračovat podle přirozenosti, ano? Můžeme plánovat věci, bez potřeby zeptat Boha, zda on má nadále pokračovat, jakékoliv je to. Protože ráno se zvýší a později se vypadne,
recognizes them in their origin, not just in their outward effects. For us, the elements are like heralds who tell us with trumpet and tabard that we are drawing near the city of a great king. But he, the saint, hails them with an old familiarity that is almost an old frivolity. He calls them his brother fire and his sister water, because he recognizes that we are truly sibling creatures of the one God who is our Father. I'm going to finish this chapter, and then we'll take a look at this canticle of the creatures. He mentions somewhere in here too, I didn't underline it, I should have, that the sanctity of the saint gives him the boldness to call himself the brother of the sun, like the great pagan, you know, god kings of Persia, right? I am Apollo, right? I am the incarnate Apollo, right? He doesn't have that anymore, right? He's not exalting himself. He's recognizing that the sun actually is like me, little me, right? Little Francis, right? By the way, the Franciscans are called the Friars Minor, which is just Latin for the little brothers, right? They were just the little brothers, the little brethren. Francis understood himself to be the little brother, and he called everything his brother and his sister, which in the mouth of the pagans was incredible hubris, right? But in the mouth of Francis is this carefree, simple, joyful, pleasure delight in the creation of God. Second to last paragraph. All these profound matters must be suggested in short and imperfect praises. And the shortest statement of one aspect of this illumination is to say that it is the discovery of an infinite debt. It may seem a paradox to say that a man may be transported with joy to discover that he is in debt. But this is only because in commercial cases where the creditor does the creditor does not generally share the transports of joy, especially when the debt is by hypothesis infinite and therefore unrecoverable. But here again, the parallel of a natural love story of the nobler sort disposes of the difficulty in a flash. There, the infinite creditor does share the joy of the infinite debtor. For indeed, they are both debtors and both creditors. In other words, debt and dependence do become pleasures in the presence of unspoiled love. The word is used too loosely and luxuriously in popular simplifications like the present. But here, the word is really the key. It is the key of all the problems of Franciscan morality which puzzle the merely modern mind. But above all, it is the key of asceticism. It is the highest and holiest of the paradoxes that the man who really knows he cannot pay his debt will be forever paying it. He will be forever giving back what he cannot give back and cannot be expected to give back. He will be always throwing away, throwing things away into a bottomless pit of unfathomable thanks. Men who think they are too modern to understand this are in fact too mean to understand it. We are, most of us, too mean to practice it. We are not generous enough to be ascetics. One might almost say not genial enough to be ascetics. Here, he's attacking the sense that the ascetics, right? The monks are stone-faced and cold. He's like, no, no, no. They are far more generous than we. A man must have magnanimity of surrender, of which he commonly only catches a glimpse in first love, like a glimpse of our lost Eden. But whether he sees it or not, the truth is in that riddle that the whole world has, or is, only one good thing, and it is a bad debt. If ever that rarer sort of romantic love, which was the truth that sustained the troubadours, falls out of fashion and is treated as fiction, we may see some such misunderstanding as that of the modern world about asceticism. For it seems conceivable that some barbarians might try to destroy chivalry in love as the barbarians ruling in Berlin destroyed chivalry in war. He's writing right after World War I, right? We have turned war into a machine. The medievals didn't have that, right? War has never been a good thing, but at least they had chivalry to keep it an honorable thing. It's no longer honorable, not even honorable. And he's also, he's saying, maybe this will happen in some distant future. It could possibly happen. But I think he knows it's already happening. This sense of the rejection of romantic love, and here we are 100 years later. There is no more romantic love. Men are afraid even to ask women out on a date because they will be seen as aggressive. And now the women are dismayed that they can't find any man to go out with them. Right. Right, because the society has destroyed romantic love. Chesterton is a prophet. That's one of the reasons I really want to read him. He sees, he sees the origin of things long before anyone else is seeing their effects. But if that should happen some future day, he says. If that were so, we should have the same sort of unintelligent sneers and unimaginative questions. Men will ask what selfish sort of woman it must have been who ruthlessly exacted tribute in the form of flowers, or what an avaricious creature she can have been to demand solid gold in the form of a ring, just as they ask what cruel kind of god can have demanded sacrifice and self-denial. They will have lost the clue to all that lovers have meant by love and will not understand what it was, that it was done it was because the thing was not demanded that it was done. But whether or no any such lesser things will throw a light on the greater, it is utterly useless to study a great thing like the Franciscan movement while remaining in the moody, in the modern mood that murmurs against gloomy asceticism, right? It's because it's not demanded that it was done. And this is exactly, I mean, this is the meme, right? This is the trope about men and women, right? The man doesn't know that he is disappointing his wife by long neglect, right? But if she tells him outright that it'd be nice if you brought flowers or made dinner or whatever every once in a while, right? Then the whole thing's ruined. I don't want it anymore, right? Well, then what's the point, says the man, right? The point is that by asking for it, by demanding it, the thing is demolished. It has to be given freely out of an imaginative spirit, right? So what I really want you to do is to rekindle this imaginative spirit of love, romantic love, rekindle that spirit of love, and then everything will be set right. I won't have to ask you, I won't demand anything of you, right? Well, where do you want to go to dinner? I don't know. You pick. Well, I want to go where you want to go. I want you to pick. That's the whole point, actually. But I want you to pick where I want to go. That's the point. It's a spiritual thing, because it doesn't make sense, right? The man is right to be frustrated in the natural sense about this, because materially, this is nonsense. But spiritually, this is reality. And it's the same spirit that's present in the ascetics, in the monks. The whole point about Francis of Assisi is that he certainly was ascetical, and he certainly was not gloomy. As soon as ever, he had been unhorsed by the glorious humiliation of his vision of dependence on the divine love, he flung himself into fasting and vigil, exactly as he had flung himself fiercely into battle. He had wheeled his charger clean round, but there was no halt or check in the thundering impetuosity of his charge. There was nothing negative about it. It was not a regimen or a stoical simplicity of life. It was not self-denial merely in the sense of self-control. It was as positive as a passion. It had all the air of being as positive as a pleasure. He devoured fasting as a man devours food. He plunged after poverty as men have dug madly for gold. And it is precisely the positive and passionate quality of this part of his personality that is a challenge to the modern mind in the whole problem of the pursuit of pleasure. There, undeniably, is the historical fact. And there, attached to it, is another moral fact almost as undeniable. It is certain that he held on this heroic or unnatural course from the moment when he went forth in his hair shirt into the winter woods to the moment when he desired, even in his death agony, to lie bare upon the bare ground, to prove that he had and that he was nothing. And we can say with almost as deep a certainty that the stars which passed above that gaunt and wasted corpse stark upon the rocky floor had for once, in all their shining cycles around the world of laboring humanity, looked down upon a happy man. I love the ends of his chapters. What would you like to say?
You should remember to look at the stars.
Yes. It's one of the, I think, the great causes of the malaise of our society is the artificiality of it. What phase is the moon in right now? Good, all right, good. Someone has seen the moon recently, but one of us, right? That was, that was the center of the life, right? Is, you know, the thing that gives us the calendar and allows us to survive with agriculture, right? And it became, it became associated with all religious festivals, right? We don't even know what it's doing anymore. We can't even see most of the stars. It's too much light. We don't let the lights go out so that we can see the night, night sky. Isaac Asimov wrote a book called Caves of Steel. Asimov is not a religious man. In fact, I think that's one of the great downfalls of his fiction, is that he writes this futuristic fiction where there is no role of religion at all, right? Kind of the Gene Roddenberry, creator of Star Trek, model of, in the future, we will have left those superstitions behind, right? Is at least the unspoken premise of it. But he writes these fascinating futurism stories, right? Caves of Steel is a future Earth where we have gone to other stars and planets, right? We've colonized other stars. The 50 nearest stars are our Earth colonies. But the Earthlings themselves can't leave anymore. They're stuck on Earth because they're terrified of the outside. They have dug themselves into the ground, you know, protection from weather. You can control your environment more, et cetera, et cetera, right? And now they're, now literally, generations of humans have grown up in these caves of steel, and they're terrified of the outside. And they can no longer leave Earth. Fascinating idea. It's happening to us, you know, at least on a psychological level. It's, we're losing our grip on the real because we're not in contact with God's nature. And it's harmful to us. I don't mean that we all need to go out and live in huts that we've built with our own hands, but it's good to be in contact with nature. And we ought to be more deliberate about living more naturally.
I really enjoyed reading the book, and I haven't been able to come to these, I've been having a lot to do on. But I also have another book that I had picked up and had been reading. And for me, I think it kind of had some similarities. But this, it's called Living in Wonder.
No.
Rod Dreher. And, you know, he too really focuses so much on the realness of, you know, like nature and things. Like with Saint Francis, where, you know, the Lord was just directing him, and he just knew that, you know, and followed those things. And this book, this other book that I'm reading too, kind of has that same theme of that. And so it's just been really enjoyable to me. And I love, I mean, my happiest place is being out in the woods, climbing up a mountain. That's where I just am glorifying God for all the beauty and stuff that he gave us. So I really enjoyed the book.
Right. What's the name of the book?
Living in Wonder.
Living in Wonder, Rod Dreher. Dreher made a name for himself 10 or 15 years ago, maybe a little longer actually at this point, with a book called The Benedict Option, where he was advocating, and I haven't read it actually. I've just had so many conversations about it that I have some sense of it. But my sense may also be slightly wrong because I haven't actually read him. But he was, if I understand him, advocating a kind of recognition, at least among some people, that this society is deeply broken and harmful, and maybe it's best for us just to build new communities. Maybe that means literally moving out into the wilderness and starting a new town, where it's just Christians, who can just live a Christian life. And we can, and not like, you know, only playing Christian music on the radio. No, we'll play music on the radio, but it will be written by people who live in a Christian society, and so it will be Christian music because it'll be virtuous music, that kind of thing, right? And this caused a lot of discussion because there are people who say, that's abandonment, right? Aren't we supposed to convert the world, right? Not run away from it, right? And so there was a lot of discussion about this. But I imagine he does have a very sensitive spirit to the good of the natural world. Yeah, so, yeah, I imagine that's probably a very good book. Very interesting thinker, Rod Dreher, in the modern day. Let's take a look at this canticle of the creatures. I've included there, obviously, most people probably won't be able to make much of it, but the original text as Saint Francis wrote it in this, in his Umbrian dialect. It's the late 1100s. The modern Romance languages are being born. And actually, up to about 1,000 AD, Latin texts would have been read with dialectical accent, basically. And so up to about 1,000 AD, the priests would read out of the missile, they'd read Latin, and the people could basically understand it because they were reading in their own dialect, basically. The pronunciation was shifting, they were dropping endings, they were, and the people could basically understand it. Like you can basically understand Shakespeare, something like that, right? It's not the way you talk, but you can kind of make, you know, an understanding of it, especially if someone who does understand it is reading it to you. It was about 1,000 AD that Alcuin insisted on what they expected was the more ancient pronunciation, the, you know, a more strict pronunciation of the Latin. And that's what actually divorced Latin speech from these developing Romance languages and made the Italians and the French and the Spanish unable to understand Latin anymore. Anyway, if you know some Spanish or Italian or Latin, you can probably make some way with the, with this Umbrian dialect that Francis is writing in. Altissimo, omnipotente, bon signore. Tu es solo laure, la gloria, el honore, et onne benedicione. Right? You can, if you know some Spanish or Italian, you can understand what he's saying there. Most high, all-powerful, good Lord, yours are the praises, the glory, the honor, and all blessing. So that's often forgotten, is that the beginning of his canticle is not to the creatures, it's to God. He's talking to God, right? This is a doxology. This is a song of praise of God. And how are we going to praise him, right? Ad te solo altissimo se confano. Et nulllo homo ne dignite mentuare. To you alone, most high, do they belong, and no man is worthy to even to mention your name. Interestingly, and this, we see this in early English as well, spelling is not standard. So we've got altissimum and altissimo in one line after the other. Maybe there was a difference between those things. I don't know. I don't know what it is. And then we get finally to that famous phrase that Pope Francis popularized or brought to the popular attention, Laudato si, right? Praise be, praise be, my Lord, with all, through all your creatures, especially Sir Brother's Son. And you notice that in the chapter, right? Mesor lo frate sole. He says, it is Franciscan courteousness that causes him, as he's addressing all the creatures, to give special precedence to Mister Son. Yeah, a little Franciscan note in there. Who brings the day, and you give light through him, and he is beautiful and radiant in all his splendor. Of you, most high, he bears the likeness. Praise be you, my Lord, through sister moon and the stars. In heaven, you form them clear and precious and beautiful. Praise be you, my Lord, through brother wind and through the air cloudy and serene, and every kind of weather through which you give sustenance to your creatures. I want to point that out also. There's a great phrase in a book by C.S. Lewis called That Hideous Strength. That's his space trilogy. Space was very popular in the mid-century, right? The imagination, popular imagination was going to the moon, going to Mars, going to the stars. So C.S. Lewis tried his hand at it. What if I wrote a space trilogy? And it's fascinating. I really encourage it. If you like C.S. Lewis, the space trilogy is very fascinating. That Hideous Strength is the last of the books, right? The first book goes off to another planet. The second book goes off to another planet. The third book comes back to Earth. And there's this woman who, you know, is kind of a worldly woman, who gets caught up with some of these kind of subversive, Christian subversives, right, in this secular society. And they take her out to the woods, right? And she, they're in the fog and the kind of drizzly rain, kind of like today, I guess. And she's, you know, trying to make conversation. She says, oh, you know, what a miserable day. And she's like, and her companions are like, oh, no. We love weather, right? And he capitalizes weather. We love weather, any kind of weather, right? And she says, what do you mean? You love weather? You love rain and snow? And they say, yes, we love rain and snow. Children love rain and snow. It's only when you become an adult that you learn to hate it. Children and dogs know what to do with a puddle, right? It's adults that have learned by vicious learning to avoid them, right? And so notice that, that's present here in Saint Francis too, right? Through, praise be you through the air cloudy and serene, right? Both of them, all of them. Whatever the way the air is, is a praise to God. I will admit, I love weather too. The one little element of weather that I have not learned to love or I have not unlearned to hate, perhaps, is wind. Because I am always outside trying to read my books, and the wind is blowing the pages everywhere. Pick a direction at least. So, yeah, it is, it is an unlearning of an adult viciousness, right? There's a great phrase in Chesterton's other book, The Orthodoxy, which I would love to read, but it is a little harder than this. Mostly because this is a story, and orthodoxy is a presentation. But he has a phrase in there that we have sinned and grown old, and our God is younger than we. And that's marvelous. That's a marvelous phrase, right? We have learned bad things as we've grown old. We have not grown up into childhood, which we should. And so it's an unlearning. The Christian life is a kind of unlearning of vicious habits. Praise be you, my Lord, through sister water, which is very useful and humble and precious and chaste. Praise be you, my Lord, through brother fire, through whom you light the night, and he is beautiful and playful and robust and strong. Praise be you, my Lord, through sister Mother Earth, who sustains us and governs us and who produces varied fruits with colored flowers and herbs. Praise be you, my Lord, through those who give pardon for your love and bear infirmity and tribulation. He means there, by the way, for those who, for the sake of your love, pardon their brethren, right? And bear infirmity and tribulation. Blessed are those who endure in peace, for by you, most high, they shall be crowned. Praise by you, my Lord, through our sister bodily death, from whom no living man can escape. Woe to those who die in mortal sin. Blessed are those who will find your most holy will, for the second death shall do them no harm. Praise and bless my Lord, and give him thanks, and serve him with great humility. Marvelous. That's, there's a reason that it has become one of the most popular prayers and meditations of the Christian people, because the Franciscan spirit is really just the Christian spirit. When Francis appeared on the scene, and hundreds and thousands of men are following him, they were just saying, it's a new apostle. The age of the apostles has returned, right? These men who, like Saint Peter, can say to Jesus, we've given up everything to follow you. What will there be for us? And Jesus says to them, all these good things. All these good things. In this life, and eternal life in the world to come. Let's go quickly through chapter six. I find chapter six somewhat unmemorable, actually. If you found it that way, I just want to encourage you. So he is, as he says, the little poor man. Chesterton compares him to the figures of his own day, Dr. Johnson, William Blake, or Charles Lamb. That's an example of Chestertonian reference that might be lost on us. But Dr. Johnson is, was just a household name. I think he's from the 1700s. By the late 1800s, he's a household name. And apparently, he had these kind of marvelous little stories that kind of let us see a picture of him. He was a humorist, not only a humanist, but a humorist. A humorist, especially in the old English sense of a man who always, who is always in his humor, going his own way and doing what nobody else would have done. He says later on, nobody could have done it until Francis did it. And then as soon as he had done it, it was seen as so characteristic of him that surely it could have been expected, right? Of course, that's what Francis would have done. But until he had done it, no one could have expected it. That's the kind of man that Francis was. And we get so many of these examples from his life, right? He says, all are agreed that the greatest art of the age was the art of public buildings. So he's making the point that there's this sense about the saints of that age, or even the society of that age, as one where there is no individuality, right? All the stories of the monks are, he was a young man. He went to the monastery. He lived his life in fasting and prayer. He became very virtuous, was charitable to the poor and to anyone who came to him for help. He gave great advice. He helped other people along the way to sanctity. And he died as an old man with great virtue, right? And that's the kind of caricature of these great men of the age or great women, right? They're all the same. Chesterton's trying to point out, they're not all the same, but we've kind of flattened them into this kind of sense. And he's saying, but the reason that that happens, because Chesterton is always sympathetic to his audience. That's not just them being malicious. There is a reason that we kind of flatten all the saints of that age into the same kind of caricature. And it's because there was the sense, even of the society of that time, that great work should be public, right? The great works are cathedrals and palaces and town squares, right? City walls and gates. That's what we're going to make great works. We're not going to make private things, we make public things. And because of that, there's a certain social consensus, or there has to be, that we do all this, it's common labor. We're all working together for this common good. And that makes, that kind of blunts a certain individuality, at least in the monuments, right? The monuments kind of efface a little bit of the individuality of the men who actually built them. The men kind of fall into the background, and the common, the public thing comes into the foreground. So he says, the popular and communal art of architecture, but it was not an age for the art of portrait painting. Yet the friends of Saint Francis have really contrived to leave behind a portrait, something almost resembling a devout and affectionate caricature. There are lines and colors in it that are personal, almost to the extent of being perverse, if one can use the word perversity, of an inversion that was also a conversion. If even among the saints, even among the saints, he has the air of a sort of eccentric, if one may use the word, of one whose eccentricity consisted in always turning toward the center. This is Chestertonian wordplay, right? He's perverse, right? But not perverse in a negative sense. He's perverse in the sense of, he does everything upside down, right? He's eccentric even among the saints, if by eccentricity you mean someone who is always going back toward the center, right? Eccentric means to leave the center, if you remember your geometry. This is, but we miss that. We miss those little games that he plays. He's doing that all the time, constantly. By the way, there is actually a portrait from life of Francis of Assisi, which is unusual in that day for anyone who wasn't a king or a prince. Francis visited the monastery of Subiaco, which is where Saint Benedict, 800 years earlier, had run away from Rome to go to his cave. Benedict had allowed himself to be lowered down into this cave so he could only escape it by having someone else bring him back up. He's saying basically, I'm coming, I'm going down there and I'm not coming out until I am as God wants me to be. And I don't know how long that's going to be. I'm going to take away my ability to flee from this life of conversion and penance. He had other monks, and there were other monks on this mountain, lower bread down to him in a basket every couple days. So he's very literally relying upon the goodness of other people. So he's very literally relying upon the goodness of other people. By the time of Francis, of course, this had become a monastery, a building, and there are many monks living there. And Francis made pilgrimage to Subiaco. By the time that he did that, he was already famous, so it may not have been right away. But he went to Subiaco, and one of the monks painted his portrait on the wall of the monastery. And we know that it's from life, because he does not have a halo around his head. He was alive. He was living. He's titled Francis, right? At the bottom of the painting. Francis of Assisi. There's a portrait of him, the little poor man, on the wall of the monastery at Subiaco. And that actually indicates, which I think is part of what Chesterton is saying, which is that the Franciscan spirit is not contrary to the Benedictine monastic spirit. It's the flowering of the Benedictine monastic spirit. And that was the point he was making earlier on in the book. Okay. So we've got all these things. "If we see afterwards a vast tumult, an appeal to the Pope, mobs of men in brown habits besieging the seats of authority, papal pronouncements, heretical sessions, trial and triumphant survival, the world full of a new movement, the friar, a household word in every corner of Europe, and if we ask why all this happened, we can only approximate any answer to our own question if we can, in some faint and indirect imaginative fashion, hear one human voice or see one human face under a hood. There is no answer except that Francis Bernardoni had happened. And we must try, in some sense, to see what we should have seen if he had happened to us. In other words, after some groping suggestions about his life from the inside, we must again consider it from the outside, as if he were a stranger coming up on the road towards us along the hills of Umbria between the olives or the vines." He's, again, trying to break his modern reader out of this thought that, "Well, yeah, but Francis is just a medieval. He doesn't mean much to me. It's kind of interesting that it happened, right? Fascinating in a kind of historical sense." And Chesterton is saying, "No. Imagine that Francis walked up today. Imagine you went on a vacation to Italy, and Francis was walking through the fields or along the road, and you met him." Or another way, maybe, he could have said it, is imagine you're walking down the street in London, and Francis walks along the street like you might have met him in Rome 700 years earlier, right? Francis was as unusual in his day as he would be in our day. The fact that we say, "Yeah, but that can't happen today." It couldn't have happened then. It did happen then, and so it can happen now. Imagine that it did. Imagine that it does. This is how we're going to understand the Franciscan moment and movement. Let's continue. In a word, we talk about... Sorry. He's talking about the cordiality and courtesy he's giving to all of the creatures, right? But he doesn't see them just as the background. They are the foreground. They are the characters in the play, right? He saw everything as dramatic, distinct from its setting. Not all of a piece, like a picture, but in action, like a play. A bird went by him like an arrow, something with a story and a purpose, though it was a purpose of life and not a purpose of death. A bush could stop him like a brigand. And indeed, he was as ready to welcome the brigand as the bush, right? Imagine walking along a mountain path, and the robber steps out and stops you, right? He's saying, "That's what the whole world was like, like a bush. He comes around a corner, and there's a bush, and he's like, 'Oh, wow! Amazing!'" Right? And marvelously, we might stop. I was on a trip recently, and I was walking on a hill, this big park, and there's a big hill, and there were these huge snails. I've never seen snails that big, almost as big as the palm of my hand. So I just stopped and looked at them for a while, right? And we could imagine, like someone being fascinated by, you know, you come around a mountain, and you come around a corner, and there's a bush that's all in flower right in front of you. Wow, we might stop and look at that. We could imagine that. We would be dismayed to be stopped by the robber. But he says, "He's as ready to welcome the robber as he was to welcome the bush," right? "Oh, a brother, right? Yes, let's talk. Oh, you want money? I don't have any money. Sorry, I really don't. If I did, here, you can have that too. If I happen to have any, you can have it." In a word, we talk about a man who cannot see the wood for the trees. St. Francis was a man who did not want to see the wood for the trees. He wanted to see each tree as a separate and almost a sacred thing, being a child of God, and therefore a brother or sister of man. But he did not want to stand against a piece of stage scenery, used merely as a background and inscribed in a general fashion, "Seen a wood." In this sense, we might say that he was too dramatic for the drama. The scenery would have come to life in his comedies. The walls would really have spoken, like Snout the Tinker, and the trees would really have come walking to Dunsinane, right? That's a reference to Macbeth, by the way. You remember the prophecy of the wood coming to Dunsinane was going to be the prophecy of the downfall of Macbeth? He says, "Well, that can never happen," right? And it did. It does at the end of the play. Everything would have been in the foreground, and in that sense, in the footlights, everything would be, in a sense, a character. This is the quality in which, as a poet, he is the very opposite of a pantheist. He did not call nature his mother. He called a particular donkey his brother, or a particular sparrow his sister. If he had called a pelican his aunt, or an elephant his uncle, as he might possibly have done, he would still have meant that they were particular creatures assigned by their creator to particular places, not mere expressions of the evolutionary energy of things. That is where his mysticism is so close to the common sense of the child. A child has no difficulty about understanding that God made the dog and the cat, though he is well aware that the making of dogs and cats out of nothing is a mysterious process beyond his own imagination. But no child would understand what you meant if you mixed up the dog and the cat and everything else into one monster with myriad legs and called it nature. The child would resolutely refuse to make head or tail of any such animal. St. Francis was a mystic, but he believed in mysticism and not in mystification. As a mystic, he was the mortal enemy of all those mystics who melt away the edges of things and dissolve an entity into its environment. He was a mystic of the daylight and the darkness, but not a mystic of the twilight. He was the very contrary of that sort of Oriental visionary, who is only a mystic because he is too much of a skeptic to be a materialist. St. Francis was emphatically a realist, using the word realist in its much more real medieval sense. In this matter, he really was akin to the best spirit of his age, which had just won its victory over the nominalism of the 12th century. Pause there. What he's attacking here is this kind of bland evolutionism that has picked up in the mid-1800s into his own day, right? Everything is evolution, right? Which Catholics, Christians, cannot accept the way that Darwin means it. We might be able to accept some kind of minor evolution, right? Some minor changes of things. We can't accept that the world came about just because things changed into other things. That is anti-realist, right? That means that this thing isn't a thing at all. A thing does not become something else. It is what it is. It can decay into nothing, right? It can be created out of nothing by generative processes, which ultimately come from God, but it can't become something else. That is to say that it isn't anything at all. And that's what Chesterton is attacking, this kind of bland acceptance of evolutionism in his day, right? And he's also pointing out that that is kind of muddled thinking anyway, right? It is the muddled thinking that thinks that you're a mystic because you don't really think anything at all. No. Francis was a real mystic, and he was the one who actually saw every single thing in its clarity. We don't, because we aren't mystical enough, is what Chesterton is saying. We're not mystical enough to see things as clearly as Francis did. And it's this kind of bland, secular negating of real mysticism by, "Oh, yeah, we just kind of close our eyes and pretend that nothing is real, that nothing that we actually experience is real." It's a demonic trick, really, to separate us from the world that God made, through which he wants to meet us. So he wants to reset Christian, real Christian prayer and mysticism on its right foundation. Oh, yeah, here's the place at the end of the next paragraph where he says, "It's an example of extremes that meet, that the little poor man, who had stripped himself of everything and named himself as nothing, took the same title that has been the wild vaunt of the vanity of the gorgeous Asiatic autocrat, and called himself the brother of the sun and moon." He can see things as they really are, and so he isn't proud when he just calls them as they are, calls himself as he really is, as he really exists in this divine drama that is the earth, is the world. So he points out that, okay, so this mysticism, so he's laying the foundation for, we can accept this mysticism as a good thing, right? As an attractive thing, right? But then, the back half of the chapter is all about how that mysticism was very practical, right? And he's been making this point all along. He's not some starry-eyed, he's not some dreamy, befuddled, wandering into walls and poles and falling into pits, right? There's a story about one of the Greek philosophers, the ancient Greek philosophers, who fell into a pit because he was looking at the stars while he was walking, right? His head was in the clouds, so he wasn't practical enough to be on the earth. Christians can have their heads in the clouds and still be on the earth, right? And Francis was very practical. His mysticism was very practical, and he demonstrates that by pointing out that, at the end of his life, he was going blind and had to be, you know, they did some kind of experimental attempt at a cure by cauterizing his eyes. I think I'd probably rather just stay blind, actually. But he points out, first of all, think about how much suffering that is for a man who really does see everything to lose his sight, right? We think of, "Oh, the saints are detached, right? They would find it easier to lose this or that." No, they find it harder. They have become stronger, so they're better able to do it than we are, right? God allows them stricter, stiffer tests, because they have gained the strength to pass them. But someone who really loves God, really loves his world, and finds it even more difficult to leave it behind, until God calls him, right? And he does submit to that, because he trusts in God's providence. But he's going blind. He's losing this sight, and they propose to burn his eyes. And Chesterton says, "It is marvelous that the man who sang about..." What was the line, right? "Praise be you, my Lord, through brother fire, through whom you light the night, and he is beautiful and playful and robust and strong." And when they pull the iron out of the fire, that's the words that he says. This is real mysticism, that in its strong moments, right? This came to him in a moment of, I'm sure, great consolation, you know, lilting song and exalting joy, and it formed him into the kind of man who can still praise God for brother fire when it's going to be used to harm him bodily, but hopefully, possibly, to cure him also. That's what Chesterton is pointing out by the practical mysticism of St. Francis, the real practical side of Christian mysticism. The seculars, who are really imitating the Buddhists in their kind of dark negation of all things, right? Become supremely impractical. Christians, on the other hand, become supremely practical in their mysticism. And he's using this as his example, that his whole life was a poem. He says, "Very few poets have had the chance to act out their poetry. Usually, when we want to kind of speak about or teach someone else about this deeper spiritual truth that we have come to understand in some way, we have to tell them by words. Francis was able to do it by living. And that's why he's really so attractive, even to the modern day, because he wasn't just writing about these things, he was living it." So this poem, "Full of the mirth of youth..." I'm at the bottom of 262, about three pages, four pages before the end of the chapter for people with other books. "This poem, full of the mirth of youth and the memories of childhood, runs through his whole life like a refrain, and scraps of it turn up continually in the ordinary habit of his talk. Perhaps the last appearance of its special language was an incident that has always seemed to me intensely impressive, and is at any rate illustrative of the great manner and gesture of which I speak. Impressions of that kind are a manner of imagination, and in that sense, of taste. It is idle to argue about them, for it is the whole point of them that they have passed beyond words, and even when they use words, seem to be completed by some ritual movement like a blessing or a blow. So in a supreme example, there is something far past all exposition, something like the sweeping movement and mighty shadow of a hand, a darkening even the darkness of Gethsemane. Sleep on now and take your rest. Yet there are people who have started to paraphrase and expand the story of the passion." He's saying, "Trying to explain the passion causes it actually to lose its power. You need to see it. You need to see..." And that's why the medievals were so fascinated with passion plays. I don't want to tell you about the passion. I want to show you. I want to show you what it was like, and that will be much more converting for your soul than any verbal exposition. This is, by the way, why we have struggled so much to convince people about the truth of the real presence of Christ in the Eucharist. We've been telling them for 25 years. The JP2 generation has been diligent. The JP2 priests have been very diligent in teaching people about the Eucharist. It doesn't work. We preach about the Eucharist all the time. It doesn't work. For many people, it doesn't work. Why? Because we preach about how this is really Jesus, and we are present in heaven when we are before him mystically. And then we build churches that look like warehouses. And it's very obvious dramatically that we are not in heaven. And we use ugly vestments, and we let the liturgy be sloppy, and we distribute communion in the hand. And, you know, we tell people, "This is the God of the universe," and then we let him fall to the ground. Well, we must not mean what we say. The acts confirm or unconfirm the words. The acts have to match the words. And that's why, at this point, what's necessary is not more catechesis about the Eucharist, it's more action about the Eucharist. And that's why we're seeing more and more pop up these Corpus Christi processions, for example, right? We're not telling a bunch of people about Jesus. We're just walking past them with him, with a man wearing a silk cope, right? And candles and singing, and we're going to have a parade for Jesus. And that will tell people far more than any pamphlet, or speech, or lecture, what we really believe about him.
Father Shemacher, why is there so much communion in the hand? I thought that was just supposed to be an indulge for a short period of time. Why is there so much of that?
It began as an abuse. The Pope decided not to fight it. He decided to permit it instead of fighting it. The normative way to distribute communion is on the tongue. Period. It's actually, interestingly, Pope Paul's rules for the indulge are, "It can only be allowed where there is no danger of profanation." Well, that happens all the time. I mean, just practically speaking, I would be perfectly within my right and possibly even my duty as a minister of Holy Communion to refuse to put communion into anyone's hands ever, starting today, with no warning. I would just say, "Look, this is what's going to happen, because it has to." Now, I'm not going to do that, because that will cause other disruptions, right? But we should be teaching people that communion in the hand is an abuse. It started as an abuse. It is tolerated by a more or less prudent decision of a Pope from 50 years ago, and it should be undone. It should be undone. People should not receive communion in the hand. And that's manifest from the fact that before that started happening, there were very few Catholics who didn't believe in the real presence. And now there are plenty of Catholics who don't believe in the real presence. Well, part of it is the way we treat it. And I don't think that's all of the solution, but I do think that's a big part of it. So, anyway. This is the kind of thing that, like I say, to insist on that by snapping my fingers would cause a great disruption. So I haven't even said that, for example, in a broad public audience. But I can say that to you, because you're here. And if you have any questions, or doubts, or concerns about that, you can come ask me. If I just, like, put that in the bulletin, right? That's 1,500 people, many of whom are not going to come talk to me if they have doubts or concerns or questions, right? So I'm not going to do that, right? But I do want to encourage people to receive communion on the tongue. And, maybe I'll take the opportunity to say this now. That's going to feel weird to you, if you've gone most of your life not doing that. That's going to feel weird to you. That's actually part of the point, because this is not ordinary eating. The symbol matches the reality, right? The symbol matches the reality. So, anyway.
Why don't you teach that to the kids in school?
I do. I do. Yep. Yes, yes, I do. I teach the second grade catechism class about the penance and Holy Eucharist, and I tell them, just straightforwardly, like, "The best way to receive Holy Communion is on the tongue." And we do that for our first communion here. They receive kneeling and on the tongue. So, yeah, we are rebuilding that culture, but it's going to take a while. So, yeah, the symbols, the liturgical symbols should match the spiritual reality. Yeah, he talks about William Blake might have been disconservative while he was rereading the Noble lines, "Tiger, tiger, burning bright, a real large, live Bengal tiger had put his head in at the window of the cottage in Falmouth, evidently with every intention of biting his head off. He might have wavered before politely saluting it, above all by calmly completing the recitation of the poem to the quadruped to whom it was dedicated. Shelley, when he wished to be a cloud or a leaf carried before the wind, might have been mildly surprised to find himself turning slowly, head over heels, in midair, a thousand feet above the sea. Even Keats, knowing that his hold on life was a frail one, might have been disturbed to discover that the true blushful hypocrisy of which he had just partaken freely had indeed contained a drug which really ensured that he should cease upon the midnight with no pain." For Francis, there was no drug, and for Francis, there was plenty of pain. But his first thought was one of his first fancies from the songs of his youth. He remembered the time when a flame was a flower, only the most glorious and gaily colored of the flowers in the garden of God, and when that shining thing returned to him in the shape of an instrument of torture, he hailed it from afar like an old friend, calling it by the nickname which might most truly be called its Christian name. Yeah, that's enough. We've gone on long enough. Yes, this is one of the few chapters in this book that I don't think ends with a typical Chestertonian sign-off, basically. But in any case, we will continue with seven and eight. My plan is also afterward, because the end of this is coming quickly. My plan is to read Frank Sheed, "To Know Christ Jesus." It's Frank Sheed, who was an American writer from the early 1900s, mid-1900s, who wrote a commentary on the gospel, basically. It's long, but I think it'll be very interesting. I heard part of it when I was on retreat at the Norbertine House a couple of years ago in California, and I was fascinated by it.
Just a couple of things going back to the previous chapters, two books. "In Defense of the Night," unfortunately, I read it so long that I don't remember the author, but "In Defense of the Night," in reference to what you were saying, how we kind of cloud out so much of the naturalized sky because we have something artificialized. It's a great book. And then also, in reference to nature, there's a book called "The Last Child in the Woods", saving our children from nature's deficit, if you remember. It's also a very great book. You have children, grandchildren, in reference to gaining them out there. Especially good if you are an educator, but it's a good book anyway. It's called "The Last Child in the Woods." And again, I don't want to be off the top.
"In Defense of the Night," and "The Last Child in the Woods." Okay, let's pray. Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and ever shall be, world without end. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.